Thinking that it's, uh, yeah, it's your goal because it's a briefing. Okay, good afternoon and welcome to our March twenty-sixth workshop. And we are going to have Dr. Carlin to start us out. And then we, we're gonna cover the strategic plan engagement, the internal auditor, and the board attorney.
Okay. Thank you very much. Good afternoon, board members, Dr. Atkins and Mr. Williams. Welcome and happy belated birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
There we go. So, um, Dr. Pruitt and I are pleased to be here with you today to speak with you. Yes. A little more birthday kudos. Love it. Well deserved. So, uh, we are here today.
What we do for birthdays.
I love it. We celebrate. We should sing.
Then I'm not having one.
Get to run a board meeting.
That's right. We'll do it after. How about when we take a break? So, uh, we are here this afternoon with you as Mrs. Gittens spoke about relative to a conversation, a follow-up conversation to the way of work memo that Mrs. Gittens distributed at the last workshop. Uh, so we'll have a brief conversation about that. And then I'll turn it over to Dr. Pruitt, who will be speaking with you about the board auditor position and some follow-up items from our last workshop as well. And then we'll speak about the board attorney position and where we go from here. And then we will have good of the order and we will convene, uh, back to the back room.
That was not very grand of you, Mrs. Fisher.
Grand, um, Ms. Morgan, you missed the grand, um... She's, she's spilling her water, but she's okay.
Do we have like... No worries. It's just water. We're all good. We're all good. That's right. So, um, thank you. So, Mrs. Gittens, I'm gonna have you, if you would, please, uh, maybe give us a little background about the way of work and, uh, your vision, uh, for this initiative and then we can entertain some conversation from our board.
Okay. Um, we, I handed this out to everyone, uh, two weeks ago, so you can kinda take a look in the revised version, um, you have now. And it gives you, uh, let me back up one second. I was talking to the superintendent, actually, a few months ago, and I said, "In my impression, when a board member starts on the board, there is not a clear focus or way of work for a new person coming on." And I'm saying that from personal experience. And you just start doing things and going to meetings and, and all of that. So, my idea was that if every, every two years when we have new people coming on, if they're given a focus and a, a, a job to do, then it, it helps in a lot of ways. And I told the superintendent, "It keeps us out of your hair." Oh, I shouldn't say that, right? Really, that was a slip. I'm sorry.
No, no. No problem at all.
But I think when, when everybody has a purpose and knows what it is they're going to do, it, it makes our job and everyone's job a little bit easier. So thus, um, based on the strategic plan, which is something that belongs to all of us, because actually, if the strategic plan is done with integrity, we all, the whole district succeeds. So, this plan is, as you can see, each one of the, um, initiative areas. And one board member would have all the way across, um, if, say it's increased focus on social emotional health of students. And we list the strategic plan project or projects that they're working on, the staff or school alignment that is involved with that, and whatever board advisories are also involved with that. And the idea is that would be, you would be the liaison for that particular initiative. Now, what we have to decide on as well is if that's going to be for a year or for two years or however long, um, all seven decide. Um, the idea is to, you can do as much or as little as you want to as that liaison. I mean, you can help with projects or you can just say when you're out talking to people, mention the initiatives of that particular initiative. So it's up to you how you wanna work it. I've talked with the superintendent about the staff piece, and he's in agreement that whoever has that particular area would be able to work in tandem with that particular section of staff and help them to achieve their goals. I believe it will help give us focus. It will help us to, um, I guess for lack of a better word, we've talked about being in your lane. Everyone would have a lane coming in and know what their particular job is. And overall, each time we switch, if we do it once a year or we do it every two years, you, you have, uh, a deep knowledge and understanding of another part of the district. So it allows you to be more knowledgeable about what we're doing and to actually give input to it. So, I think that's, um, and one other thing, on the, on the advisory boards, it'll list two, but those, that's kind of fluid, as we were talking about, and you may want to address that. So, that's kind of it in a nutshell. What questions or comments do you have?
So at this point, we'd like to have some discussion or questions that you, that you have relative to the plan. Mrs. Fisher?
So, um, what does it look like when a board member is helping staff with a project? I'm, I'm not that clear on that.
It just depends. I mean, let's say you were doing the pre-K champion and they were having some type of an event or they needed, uh, community involvement. And perhaps you know some groups in the community that could help with that initiative? And you'd say, "Well, I can, you know, as I'm going out doing my committees or whatever, I can talk to that group." Because that's something staff may not have time to do. Also, when you, when we convene in our meetings and you could say, "Well, you know, increased readiness in kindergarten is having difficulty doing this. Is anyone, does anyone have information that they can add or help us with that particular initiative?" So, maybe Betsy knows someone that could help or, uh, you know, someone else. So, go ahead.
I was gonna, uh, also just piggyback on something Ms. Gittens was saying. So, one of, one of the, um, questions you may have is what is our, our role as a board relative to the work versus staff? Okay? We know that in the strategic plan, there is an abundance of projects for staff to be engaged with. What we're, uh, talking about here is really at the larger, higher level. It's advocacy, it's championing a cause, it's if we have a mental health plan, um, for example, in the district and we're looking for additional resources, we're looking for a psychiatrist, we, we need, we, we haven't been able to enlist somebody's help, uh, does anybody know anybody, uh, that would be out there that might be amenable to helping? Uh, is there, um, you know, you're, you sit on a foundation board or you sit on a, a community board and you know of a grant, you know, that might tie in with that? And so that would give some opportunity for the board to be associated with that. So, it's really a couple of roles. It's advocacy around an issue. It's, uh, resourcing, so helping with human resources as well as financial resources as appropriate. And those are really, you know, and being the champion for that particular area. That's really what we're asking for, not asking for you to, you know, go run a meeting and write the process for something, uh, really being there as, as a champion of that particular cause. And like Ms. Gittens said, to the extent that you're comfortable. And what we tried to do just in draft, and staff, of course, is gonna be looking at this and they may have some other ideas. These were just initial ones that we've heard based on conversation at the board table and based on conversation through cabinet. These are some of the projects that rose to level, but there may be, um, some of our chiefs that look at this and go, "You know, I also could use help in this area." Or, "This is a stronger priority area for me and here's three ways I could use some help from the board." So we're really just trying to look at, "Could you become the champion of that particular area?" And then, "Would you be willing to help us resource it and champion that in the community?" That's really what this boils down to.
Can you mention what, the conversation about Lawrence and how we can use it eventually?
Yes, thank you. So I was speaking with Mrs. Stillwell and she, uh, was mentioning to, to us that sometimes, uh, we're looking for ideas when we write our newsletter, our monthly newsletter that goes out to the community. So she'll sometimes get approached like, "Oh, what would be something that would be great for me to write about?" And she said, "This could be very nicely aligned with what your focus of that particular newsletter is gonna be." And we know all of you are out in the community speaking at various organizations and so obviously, you're gonna talk about a lot of good things happening in the district, but this would give you another thing to champion out there on behalf of the strategic plan. Okay, Mrs. Patrica?
I think it might help us better leverage our, um, advisory committees as well because, um, I think we're supposed to be meeting with you at the beginning of each year and determining what big issues we have coming before us and what we can, like, what can I bring to finance committee, what, what issues need to be addressed or what recommendations can come out of there? But if we're, if we're, as board members specializing or focusing our work, then we know which advisory committee to sit on and which projects to bring to them for recommendations. I still think we need to have a larger discussion regarding advisory committees, specifically DAC. Um, and I know we're gonna get there, um, but, but I think this is a step in the right direction.
And, and also along with the advisory board piece of it, like I said, there, there's, you may see two under one initiative, but if I'm doing, you're doing finance and I'm doing something else and there's something we can connect with for our advisory boards, it creates a synergy that we don't have. We're not working in silos. We're working, you know, together in tandem. So...
So any other questions or discussion? Yes, ma'am.
I, I just wanna make sure that, and I, I think this is great, um, what you put together here, but I just wanna make sure that we understand as board members, it is not our job to do the job of these departments. We are here as we should already be advocating and championing for the district as a whole right now. So I wanna make sure that we do not get that clouded and just, "Oh, well, maybe I can do this now or maybe I can do that," when it's not our place to be doing that.
Right, exactly. And, and as you start to look at some of the descriptors, you'll see words like advocate, um, community support, uh, resource, you'll see those types. And those words were intentionally used. Elicit, community support, elicit, finance, financial support, that type of thing. So thank you.
So I, I'm wondering, can we go towards consensus and also maybe at a later date deciding, um, the length of time? If we wanna do it for two years or for one year or...
And who gets what?
And who gets what? It's...
So, so that was another question I had, was the rotations as the board changes?
Mm-huh.
Because if we were to start this now, then next year we have another election, we could have some changes. So I think, you know, the one-year thing is probably the most useful at this point.
And it also allows you, you know, those of us, this is our first year, we've got, you know, three more years to go. So the more that we learn and are involved in different areas, the better...
Absolutely.
...useful we are to the whole process.
So, Mrs. Morgan, we just wanna make sure you're part, uh, having a moment to weigh in if you'd so choose to do that, if you want to. Um, we certainly would be open to any feedback you have.
I'm fine. I'm good. I think it's a good idea. I think it's worth a shot.
Okay. So what I'd like to do now is just ask for consensus, is this work that we would like to engage in, um, and then we can certainly process this out. We'll get with, with our team and we'll make sure the chiefs look at it, make sure there's no other projects that might rise to a higher priority level. And then we'll get back with you with sign up. So, conceptually, are you with us on this? So, love it, can live with it. And Mrs. Morgan will need you to, um, say we have consensus or not from your standpoint.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I, I agree to this.
Okay, I saw all thumbs up, so we'll, uh, get back, uh, to the drawing board. We'll make sure that our chiefs are looking at this. Everybody, uh, has a moment to weigh in and we'll bring a process back to you as well as a sign up opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
And we'll turn it over to Dr. Pruitt at this point to continue the conversation about our positions.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
Uh, first what I would like to do is introduce, um, some folks that are here with us, uh, this afternoon to provide information and, and potentially answer any questions that, uh, you may have from the clerk of court's office, um, Tim Parks and, um, Tammy Anderson. Tim heads up the, uh, office and, um, and Ms. Anderson, uh, works with him. Um, because there was some, um, kind of varying questions and perspectives on potentially utilizing the clerk of courts, I thought it might be beneficial if we could just hear from them, if you guys are okay to sort of talk about what they do and, um, what potentially could be their, um, assist, uh, to the district. Would that be okay?
Yeah, sounds good.
Got your microphone. You can still sit or however you wanna do it, but there's the microphone right there. However you wanna do it.
Stand here?
Yeah, that's good. Yeah. I think it was on already.
Can you hear it?
Nope. The light was on, but...
Sounds like it's on.
Um, give this a try.
There you go.
Um, we're here representing the, uh, Lee County Clerk of Courts, Lynda Doggett, who could not be here because of a conflicting, uh, appointment she had. But, uh, what we do is we, I am the director or the inspector general for the Lee County Clerk of Courts and Tammy is the deputy inspector general. And what we do is audits and investigations for the Lee County Board of County Commissioners, the Lee County Port Authority and the Lee County Clerk of Courts, um, making up approximately thirty-five hundred employees and, you know, all of that. We, we have a department of seventeen people, which is, um, composed of ten people who are in the audit function. And I was looking through the new Florida statute, one thousand one dot four-two, effective July first, and looking down the list of mandatory things that the, that the auditor is expected to do. And it's a mammoth list and it's things that we're quite familiar with. Most of these are what we do, such as, uh, ongoing financial verification, comprehensive risk assessment, uh, detect fraud, waste and abuse, uh, compliance with laws, rules, grants, et cetera. Efficiency, reliability, safeguarding, all of this is things that are in our lane, things that we do for the, um, county, the clerk and the port authority. And, um, what we do is, um, we, we provide assurance to management. That's part of our definition of internal auditing, is to provide assurance to management when we do an audit, that things are as they should be. Or if there are not things that, you know, as they should be, we can make recommendations to bring it around so that, uh, add value and, uh, bring it into compliance, conformance, or whatever the standard is that, that needs to be met for that department or that business unit or whatever we are auditing. We, um, again, all of these things are familiar to us and it takes us, uh, basically ten people to fulfill this. Uh, we are, right, reports and we are independent from the Board of County Commissioners. We're independent from the port authority and, uh, in some instances, we're independent with Lynda Doggett. We report to her, but we have to also have our own independence that, um, uh, we work for her and of course, she can terminate that employment at any time she wishes, but, uh, she cannot dictate to us in some instances exactly what we must do. We have that kind of independence in order to be a certified, accredited, peer-reviewed audit function, so...
It's our credibility. It keeps us independent. That's what provides the credibility to our department and the team that we work with.
So, just looking at this, again, it's a very extensive list of things that need to be done. And it, I, just from the outside looking in, it looks like a staff of, uh, auditors, a team of auditors with various specialties and certifications. We have people who are specialized as CPAs, CIA, CIG, CIGI, CI, a whole laundry list of certifications that we brought together as a team. And this has taken us five years as, as an inspector general. And we had probably thirty years of previous internal audit experience. So we've been around the block for a long time, but in order to obtain the accreditation, the certification, the, the peer review, that, that took a lot of effort. And we've done that over the past five years as an inspector general. So it's a very, uh, time-consuming, very effort-driven, very, we have to be very motivated, passionate professionals to, to create a, a staff that can, can do all of this. And if there's any way that, you know, Lynda Doggett has offered any help that we can offer, um, that we're, we're on board, so...
So I think logistically, one of the questions, um, if, if, if there is an employee that is hired to report to the board, how would that fit in with your office, so to speak? Um, there was some conversation around hiring someone that would direct work and then possibly hiring someone who would actually do audit work and then, you know, get other assistance when needed? And how that might fit in with what your office would be able to provide?
Okay. Um, if, if you had one person that was supposed to do all of this, that's a setup for a failure in my, my humble estimation. Because, uh, like I said, we have ten people to do all of this for a much reduced size, you know, entities as compared to the school board. Um, if we were to help do audits for the, um, school board, we would have to report to Lynda Doggett, the clerk of courts. But we would, all our reports would go directly to this board. And how that came across to this board could be through an employee who is a contract overseer or, I don't know how you would call it. Uh, we would complete an audit, we would complete a report mandated that we publish the report, but at first it would come to the board. When we, if we did a, um, risk assessment, comprehensive risk assessment for the entire school board, we would, of course, that would be, um, in our standards, we have to ask management, we have to ask everybody, "What do you think about our risk assessment?" We, and then we would come back and select the audits and, and go after it.
So could...
Stems to from the fact you'd have to approach it, well, if you're gonna conform to the standards to start with, you'd have to look at enterprise-wide risk assessment of your entire audit universe, which yours is roughly, I think, four times the size of what we're looking at. And then east of those audits, we go back, put the risk assessment together. Those high-level risk areas are populated and then we start having those conversations of what keeps you up at night and then do risk-based per those departments or those level units.
Could the contact at the district or the employee at the district direct any work to your office?
We would be independent. We would have to, yeah.
Through an MOU or through some mechanism of that means. Are you asking if we were requested to do an audit?
So for example, if they, if there was an employee that was an auditor, it, could that, could they, could that person contact you and say, "We want you to go audit XYZ"?
That would have to be worked out in the audit plan for the year. We, and, yes.
That's...
Who would you like to start?
Yeah.
I've got two questions for you. The first is, I'm not clear on what your relationship is with the Board of County Commissioners. So, the statute requires, um, direct reporting to the board, but it sounds like you're reporting to Ms. Doggett, who reports to the county commission. And it's also, is it true that, um, she serves as the treasurer for the Board of County Commissioners?
She's a comptroller.
Comptroller, okay.
The reporting is that she hires us, we, we do the audits, we then submit, you know, once we're completed, we submit the reports to the Board of County Commissioners. So that, that's our reporting.
Okay.
But it goes internally to the highest level of our organization, which is the clerk of the court. So, that's...
Okay. And then my second question is, you do, you said you do auditing for the port authority?
Yes, we do.
And that requires a specialized level of knowledge with regard to whatever it is the port authority does.
Yes.
Um, so is it fair for me to assume that you have specialized training? So for instance, transportation at the county is much different from transportation in a school district. So how could we have confidence that your auditing function would take into account those differences?
Good example, um, let's say you're gonna do an IT audit that might be outside of our expertise through the standards we follow, which we follow red book and green book standards. We have a obligation, responsibility to hire folks with certain specialized, um, areas. If that's outside of our competence of what we can perform, then we could go out to an RFP and bring in those experts for those one-offs. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
We know our limits.
Um, Debbie, I'm sorry. To piggyback on what you just said then, please. So when you have to go through the outside professional, then who pays, is that part of yours or is that an additional cost to us? Number one.
It is.
And, um...
It, it is very rare though that we, we've, very, very seldom had to call anybody in outside. We have the expertise. We understand controls, we understand processes, uh, we, we learn, we, we have training, so we direct everything to, you know, make sure that we are competent in what we take on.
Okay. And then the second, thank you. And then the second question is, which I think you touched on it like for a second, the action plan. So who would you sit down with at the beginning of the year to set up what that plan looks like in order to know what you're auditing?
Uh, we first do a risk assessment. We have, uh, a number of items that are, uh, some of them are carved in stone, the budget, the number of employees and all that. And those set up our risk assessments. And some of them are subjective. You know, if this, if you stop doing this function, how would it affect the community? How would it affect, you know, the public?
Public perception.
Public perception. And other measurements. And then we do a heat map and you can see the numbers of the highest risk areas, as we call them, rise to the top. And then out of those high-risk areas, we say, "We think that this one should be audited, maybe hasn't been audited for a long time in our case," or, um, "There's new management or there's some other risk factor that says we should do that." And then we also confer with our, you know, the boards and the management and we say, "What do you think? This rises on our heat map, is it on your heat map too?" And then we, out of that, we select a reasonable number of audits that we believe that the staff that we have assigned can handle that number of audits within the year. And that's our audit plan for the year.
Okay. And then just one more question. So, um, and I think, um, Dr. Pruitt had mentioned this. So would then, would you have, there would be no issue with you having that conversation with a, say, an employee that we would have here that would answer directly to the board, given them that information to share with us?
I think that speaks a little to like the two-tier. We start with the enterprise-wide risk and then as that heat map develops, we come to meet like Tim just described, then as you get to that business unit, that's where we would have that conversation.
Okay.
For that individual at that more granular level, you know, the what keeps you up at night conversation again and what do you think should be looked at, along with our factors that we put in.
Can I...
Yes, thank you.
Can I hold off for one second? Ms. Morgan, are you able to hear everything?
I am, thank you.
And, and I'll see if you have questions in just a second after Ms. Jevanelli, if that's okay?
So one of my questions, I'm sorry, one of my questions, um...
So, one of my questions, I'm sorry, one of my questions, so like at the Port Authority, do you have a specific contact person that directs you? I think that's what we were trying to get at is, you know, where, so, you know, like, or do you have your plan, you don't really need a contact person, then you just come back and report? I guess I'm trying to, we're trying to figure out.
What we do is, we, we create a risk assessment for the Port Authority and we bring it all together and we say, this is our heat map, these rose to the top, then we bring in their executive team and we say, "This is what we think, what do you think?" And they will say, "Well, we think that we would like you to do this audit and if it's reasonable and it, you know, rises to that occasion, yes, we do the audit." Otherwise, they approve, you know, give us verbal approval, they think that what we're doing is fine and then we go out and do the audits over the course of the year and turn the reports over as we complete.
Okay. And so, then my other question is, do you actually do forensic audits or you're separate, that is separate, because I don't really know much about that, the differences, so.
Okay. When, all of our auditors are trained to observe for potential fraud, waste and abuse and if they detect it, if we get tips for potential fraud, waste and abuse, then we can turn to an investigation where we have a skill set where we can determine if perhaps there's a violation of policy procedure, violations of, criminal violations even and the ultimate would be if we found potential criminal fraud that we could turn over to the state attorney, law enforcement, FDLE or some agency like that.
Great, thank you.
Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, okay. So, how do you do a risk assessment for Lee County School District?
To identify the various factors that would go into a risk assessment and we have people who, who do that for us regularly, pick out the, you know, budgetary factors, that's always a big thing, number of employees, public perception issues, things that have risen to the top, management changes, there's a whole number of things that we could select and then attribute, number rating to each one of those issues, per business unit, per department, per however we would break it out and then create a, you know, the population and show you a heat map that where the numbers of all these factors come together and the highest numbers get the most attention.
If we already have, aren't done, an efficiency audit done, that has worked Lee, took results in, efficiency and effectiveness audits in operations, IT and maintenance, I think it is, would we just come to you and say, "Do those" and not do the risk assessment? Would that be a problem for you?
We're mandated to do a risk assessment.
It's our credibility.
Yeah, that's part of our standards.
Okay.
Accreditation process, peer review process, it's a must.
Okay. So, then my next question is, how do we have a contract with you? Do we contract for man-hours? Do we contract for you to hire a certain number of staff? I mean, you have no idea how many staff you will need to support us and what their skill set will be because you don't know the district yet. So, how, how would that all happen?
That would have to be worked out of, the way we do it with the Port Authority is we, we build the full-time hours that are worked by our auditor out at the port and we just send them an invoice and it's paid every month.
How many, how many man-hours do you give Port Authority a month? How many man-hours do you give the other entities on a month or an annual basis?
The Port Authority, one full-time auditor, senior staff auditor, all year long, plus on occasion, we will go in and do like we're just starting an IT audit where we have an IT specialist that our regular onsite auditor doesn't have that expertise. So, we-
I think it's important to note too, that the auditor that's stationed at the Port Authority is an employee of the clerk of the court.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, please?
The onsite auditor at the LCPA is an employee of the clerk of the court.
Okay. Can I, can I ask a quick question? Okay, so you, our, our dilemma, I guess, when we talked about this before, is that we have an option of one employee, and tell me if I'm wrong, that is housed here, that handles our auditing and if there is an issue that they can't handle, they would subcontract out. Am I on the right page?
Right, and they can't do that.
No, I know. And that's, that's what I'm saying. So, these, this was our first option. The second, and, and along with that, could your office be one of the ones that is subcontracted out too? Is that what you're saying you cannot do?
That's what Lynda said, no.
Okay.
We, we do-
Request audit, for example, with the state attorney, when there was a change at the beginning of the year, we, they did a request, we had a memorandum of understanding of what that scope would be and we performed that. Is that the question you're asking?
And we also did an audit here a few years ago, having to do with the dental plan.
Right.
And that was a one-off, we had a memo of understanding for that one audit. As far as, on a regular basis, we're using our current staff to come out here that for-
And you can't do that.
For this, that, that's way too intense for us.
Okay. Well, like you mentioned with, you, you said with the, was it water management, whatever it was that you said, you give them one full-time person that works.
Port Authority, yes.
The Port Authority?
Yes.
So, they have, in your office, they have one full-time person-
Correct.
-that does their work.
Yes.
They, they are three hundred and fifteen, three hundred and twenty people work for the Port Authority, so it's a relatively small universe of employees at the Port Authority.
Right. And that, yeah, that's the only issue that I saw as well, that you mentioned your risk management, you know, footprint is much smaller than ours, so, okay.
For clarity, we do a enterprise-wide risk assessment for each of those entities that we have the jurisdiction for, the Port Authority, the Board of County Commissioners, county employees and the clerk of the court.
So, it is a potential that even if we went in a different direction, that you could do that, that first risk management for us to give us that heat map that you were talking about?
Current team structure and size, probably, yeah, that's a-
So, when I spoke to Ms. Doggett, she said that their current staff is very, they don't really have any extra time and so that if we were going to do this, it would need to be, we'd kind of have to be all in because they would hire staff to accommodate what the needs are.
Okay. But they wouldn't report directly to us necessarily?
No.
Yeah. Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I mean, not in a management fashion, for somebody to say, "You have to do this audit." We would, we would direct the audits, but all our reports would come directly-
To us, right. Okay. Ms. Vaughn?
Okay. Unless I'm misunderstanding this, I'm, I'm seeing kind of a different logistic and relationship between your office and the county commissioners and also the Port Authority because we, we're all one school district and here, as school board members, we work for the school district, but the auditing would be responsible to us as a board as we serve our constituents and our, and our stakeholders. So, is, does that make, does that make sense to you? In, in other words, when you're looking at, let's say, the Board of County Commissioners, who would it be? It would be the whole Board of County Commissioners that would have a continuous, ongoing relationship, right?
Yes. Lynda Doggett is the comptroller and auditor to the Board of County Commissioners, so-
Okay.
Everything that we do on her behalf goes directly to them and then they are responsible, you know, to act upon it if, if they wish to act upon it. They can take, you know, we can tell them, "We think you should maybe insert this control" and they could say, "We don't think it's necessary" and-
Okay. And as I've, as I've researched internal versus external, it seems like with external, there's, there's more of a relationship to shareholders or stakeholders or, you know, depending on the nature of the company. How would you comment on, on that? Who, who are you mostly beholden to when you-
We do not do too much interface with the external auditors. They give a financial opinion as to whether or not the, the bank statement or the county statements are fairly-
Okay.
Fairly stated and they comment if there are any material discrepancies and such. We, as internal auditors, you know, that's not really our job, we-
Different objectives.
Different objectives. We, we are assurance, we, we look through all their, you know, we, we can go into the department and we can look at their budget, we can look at their expenditures and we can give assurance that those are fairly, you know, accepted, that they're for the good of the business unit, for the good of the county and that's how we look at it rather than the entire financial operation as a whole.
Ms. Gittens, Ms. Fisher, and then we'll go to Ms. Patrica. Thank you.
Okay. And I know, Ms. Giovanelli had had something earlier.
Yeah, I'll let them, it might be one of their-
Okay, okay. Ms. Fisher? Okay. So, backing up, you are employed by the clerk of court-
Yes.
-as a certified, accredited audit committee?
Yes. As a, as a structure of, we are certified, accredited, peer-reviewed, however you want to state it, by our peers and-
The committee itself is through the charter. Because of the position of the clerk of the court, we have a charter as an inspector general and that is where that authority comes through, is the charter, that's part of that.
So, then, then looking at our functions, you would have to hire additional staff, but you would in essence be our auditor?
Yes.
Okay.
That's a possibility.
That's a possibility. Okay. Your, your group or whatever. How many additional staff do you anticipate you would have to hire to accomplish these functions?
When we look at an organization of your size and we've looked at a lot of audit shops throughout the state, you know, the, the big counties and the numbers that we come back with are somewhere in the, you should have a staff of seven to ten people auditing if you wanted to do the full structure as other counties do it. And-
Okay.
I think that that is about the size that would require to fulfill this new statute.
So, then, a ballpark, what would the price tag on that be? You know, because I, I mean, I think people work at different levels, I'm, I'm assuming, yes.
Certified auditors are not cheap. Obviously, in the government sector, we, we don't pay as much as the private sector does. The, the private sector, the people who come to us from the private sector are tired of working seventy, eighty hours a week doing their, you know, work and there's, you know, trade-off, if you will.
Right.
Price point too between internal audit, senior auditors, assistance to that team, there'd be various price points.
Right, right.
Right now.
Yes.
So, our, our pool is kind of smaller than it was-
Okay.
-years ago. But what, the one thing we offer is we are already a structure that is accredited, certified, whereas if, if you hired somebody and said, "Build a staff," you're talking five, six years down the road, you would have a-
Exactly, right.
-prohesive staff that's accredited and it takes time and effort.
Your effort.
So, so you're already good to go minus hiring the additional staff that would take to accommodate-
Yes. Our, our audit reports would say that we audited this in conformance with our standards, whereas if you hired somebody off the street and said, "Do an audit," they might not be able to say that.
And so, then you would not be employees of the school district, you'd be employees still of the clerk of court?
Yes.
Okay, okay. All right. Those are my questions for now.
First of all, thank you for being here. You totally didn't have to be here and you're giving a very good presentation, so thank you for your time. The statute talks about a five-year plan and you're talking about a one-year plan. Is that something that we could work out or engage in with you? Or certain functions in the statute have to be accomplished every five years, I guess, is more accurately stated?
Yes. You have to have a comprehensive risk assessment. We do a comprehensive, in our shop, a comprehensive risk assessment every three years, but we do a risk assessment every year and we, we have to, we have to do by our standards, an annual assessment as to where we want to go with our audit plan and we can carry over some of the material from the, you know, the, during the three-year plan and we don't have to be comprehensive, but we have to come up with a risk assessment and an audit plan on an annual basis.
Okay. And may I direct a question to Attorney Williams? How does this fit in in terms of statutory requirements with the word "employ"?
Again, the, the word "employ," I know Mr. Doda gave different opinions on it with respect to this. It hasn't been challenged as of yet. It goes into effect July first. My understanding of the statute, as well as our former board attorney, Keith Martin, that as long as you're employing a directly, whether it be through these services or an outside firm, that that fits the statutory definition of employ. Again, there are other models that, I'll use the attorney, for example, City of Jacksonville, for example, Duval County contracts with the City of Jacksonville's attorney's office to provide legal services for Duval County Public Schools. They don't work for Duval County Public Schools, they actually work for the City of Jacksonville, but they have two attorneys that serve in that role and in a sense are employed that, via that means, so it's very similar.
And if, if we're wrong, if it's challenged and we're wrong, what's the downside for us?
The downside is that we have to go out and employ directly an auditor. I, I don't, I don't think in this instance, the district is attempting to do anything inappropriate. I think we're trying to meet the statutory definition and as we've previously discussed, there are other districts that are taking this position because they already utilize services of an outside CPA firm. Again, without any sort of precedence or specific guidance and, and I tend to think with any sort of statutory language, if they intended it to be in there, they would have specifically stated it. So, it kind of, it kind of, you know, unfortunately, we have a lot of statutes out there very similar to this, but absent that language of must be, you know, directly employed by the school district internally, I mean, it's not in there, so. And I think the, some of the legislative history on it looked at different school districts and addressed, I think with respect to internal auditors that reported to the superintendent, for example, that's the only distinction they made. They didn't say that you can't have, you know, I think that was the distinction they made with respect to Lee County is that we, the, the reporting lines. In this instance, it has to go directly to the board, so.
And if I recall correctly, Brevard and Manatee were mentioned in the staff reports, right?
That's correct.
And Brevard is now captured by this statute because they're over the monetary threshold, so they are currently contracting out, but the staff report didn't say that they were going to have to internally hire.
That, that is correct and I've spoken to the attorney from Brevard County myself and I know they are, they are considering keeping their process the way it is. I mean, again, we've, we, school board attorneys discuss a lot of the issues that impact our district and again, this, there's no definitive answer on this one, everyone's kind of making sense of it and the people that are having to employ are, are taking different methods. You know, again, I use an example such as Palm Beach where they have a auditor that serves as an OIG as well, so, I mean, how does that meet the statutory definition? I'm sure they're going to say, "Well, it still reports directly to the school district even though it serves in that alternative function." So, there's no kind of right or wrong answer in this and as, again, as it's been somewhat untested, I think people will feel it out as it goes ahead.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Morgan?
My impression was from watching the meeting, that the board had pretty much decided to at least have one employee reporting directly to the board as the internal auditor. And I guess my comment at this time is, that's the only obligation we have to, and I am concerned that we as a board are trying to, and I think I said this in an email to you all, trying to create an organization to support an action plan we haven't developed. So, I'm keenly interested in getting, assuming we're going to hire somebody, getting a definition of who that person should be, what their skill set should be, et cetera. Then we have the luxury of figuring out, per that person's recommendation, what our options are, what they will cost and how we move forward.
One else? Yes.
I just want to respond to that. Ms. Morgan, I don't think that one person can fulfill the requirements of this statute. I think, I think that's.
I don't think one person can either. I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is that we have to have somebody in place with a plan to move forward for the year. I mean, you really believe that the state expects us to staff up to meet this requirement by July 1st?
That what we're looking at is a preliminary determination of whether we hire out the entire function, or we hire an individual who then builds a department.
My impression from the workshop was that you had all agreed on hiring somebody that you wanted, somebody reporting to the board. I apologize. I misunderstood.
I left that workshop with that opinion as well, but I think getting some, some context here from the clerk of court's office is helpful in helping us figure out, I think that becomes the preliminary question from today, which is, do we hire this out entirely? Or do we hire somebody and over a five-year period of time, build a department? Is that?
Comment on that. I sent everyone an email from Hillsborough County. I'd spoken with Gretchen, I can't think of her last name. And she sent a list of CPA firms that do this very thing, and including the one that they use. And so my suggestion might be to contact.
I didn't get that email, whatever that was.
I think I just sent it to you, I think.
Oh, just now?
Yeah.
Okay.
But they may have, since they are doing it, may be able to corral us in a little bit to say this is how they do it for this particular district or that district, and give us a little more, you know, direction than us just trying to.
I think Mr. Williams might already have that background.
Yeah, and I believe Mr. Doda also reached out to the different districts. I mean, we both utilize our attorney's listserv as well to get that information. And again, I think some districts, just like ours, are weighing their options as they, as we speak, and have yet to reach determinations. However, I think there are a few that are going with the external option. Again, with such, with the deadline looming, you know, you want to have something in place. And I think you've got different districts going different directions. It's not, which again, goes to the fact that employ can mean one or the other, not necessarily just one.
And I think, I was looking at the ones that have, that already have that in place, that have been using it, that aren't struggling with the, the language that we are at this point, just to see, you know, what have they done? And how are they handling it, so to speak? So somebody have their hand up.
So my thought is Palm Beach County has, they have a great website, and they have many employees under their inspector general. I have it up, actually, but why not, let's see if they would come over and maybe workshop with us and explain what they do, so just like we're hearing what they do, so we can really get an idea, because now we're talking, we just kind of changed it up a little bit, and I think that we really need to understand what the department in-house is versus outside. And I think we're getting the idea of the outside, but I think, and I've, like, I've reached out to one of the school board members to see if that is a possibility, but I haven't heard back yet. I think they have to.
Maybe we could do it as a webinar or something.
That sounds great, whatever, that, so that we, maybe we could.
I brought that up a couple workshops ago, speaking to Osceola County, and how they have the internal and exactly how many people they need, and it was around seven people. And we don't have that luxury right now to bring, to create that in the amount of time that we have. But I know that, I mean, I have my notes from that meeting, and I mean, we.
And there is a chart in that one work paper dated February 22nd. It lists all the districts and what they're doing. So we have that.
And we have that.
Yeah.
I don't know, maybe I'm.
Are any of those reporting only to the board?
Palm Beach does.
Is Palm Beach the only one?
I think Hillsborough does.
And they will be doing the same thing.
They, and Hillsborough formed theirs in 2015 because they had, they passed the tax. So that's how theirs built from that point on. It's in their information on their website.
Yes. I think, I think an internal audit function is an internal audit function, whether we build a staff or we hire you to do it, it's the same thing. So I'm not sure what we're going to get by workshopping or briefing or whatever with another school district, because their internal audit department does what, what the clerk of court's office will do. So to me, that pushes the decision off and makes our timeline longer.
If you want to hire somebody.
If we want to hire somebody and build a department. So I'm not sure what information that brings to me that I don't already have.
For me would be cost, actually, because what it's going to cost us to hire them out, outsource, or hire within. I think the cost is most important right now for us.
So that we get an estimate from them, we get an estimate from private companies, and we get an estimate from, we look at what Palm Beach and others are paying, and we make a determination from there, but I'm not sure workshopping it makes.
So one, one thing we could ask, I mean, I heard you say seven to 10 people, but we're not talking that next week we would go put out an ad for seven to 10 people, right? I mean, it would be a slow build as well.
Yes, it would be a slow build.
So, yeah.
But we, but that makes, that makes it a five-year plan.
Right.
Okay, Ms. Morgan? Go ahead.
All about money.
Go ahead, Ms. Morgan.
I would just say that contracting out of the interim.
Right.
If you're going to build internally, you're going to have to contract something out.
In the beginning, and maybe I'm wrong, is that one of the options was to hire a firm of which we would have our own representative, whether they had in-house here or somewhere else, but they would be, you know, our representative that we, that would report to us. And so I, I guess that's what we're looking at, but in talking with the clerk's office, that's not something that necessarily you can provide. Am I?
No.
Okay. All right, so.
I think we've got two more hands up.
No, no, I did.
So then you said that one full-time person who's stationed at the. So then are you suggesting that for us, it would be seven to 10 employees that would be stationed here?
No.
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 Be stationed there.
We could do.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
That would have to be worked out. That could.
Okay.
Before they worked, it would just be a matter of the management of that and how that works.
If we contract with you, you're going to hire seven employees to accommodate us.
Yes.
And one of them would.
Whereas where they're stationed, that would have to be worked out.
Okay, right. Okay.
No, that was it, I just.
And what we have in the office is we have a whole network of computers and software and all that that we already bring, and plus our policies and procedures that you would have to build up yourself if you select to do it internally. And the whole foundation and structure, plus we've also gone over our accreditation process recently, so all that under control at this moment.
What would be the shortest period of time? So for example, if we wanted to have you do that initial risk assessment, work with the board, to come up with a plan, and hire an employee or two, like what would be that, that would be feasible? A year, two years? Like if we said, "We don't want you to, we want you to start us out, get us going, and then turn it over to us." What, what would be a reasonable amount of time?
That is something we would have to take a look at.
Okay. But this is an idea.
It's a big, it's a big step in itself.
I think what we're hearing too from all of, from some of you, and I think to your comment of the extra, they may have external firms that have a familiarity with school districts.
Mm-hmm.
And currently, our familiarity is with the port authority.
Right.
County commission and the clerk of the court. So you get that subject matter expertise of those entities. Is that a fair?
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
Well, I think the bottom line is too, is that the concern is the, when you go to do the risk assessment, that we're engaged in that, we're involved in that, and that at the end of all of that, that you would put it all together, the mapping and everything else, and then bring it back to us as the board versus to someone else. I think that is the big concern, is who, who is that, who are you reporting that to? Is that?
Well, kind of, the statute with the employer is the issue. It's just the statute.
That could be.
Okay. For, for sake of time, go ahead.
Can I, just can I ask one question? When, when doing your assessment of the district and the, what the statute requires in terms of audit functions, how did you reach a number of terms of how many auditors you think you would have to hire in order to service the district? What was that thought process?
We did, we did the research like you did. We went to all the districts and saw what their audit shops are, their ID shops are, and we kind of extrapolated the numbers based on what they had, and we put ourselves in kind of the middle of that, and that was the number that kind of jumped off the page. And the.
Oh, I'm sorry, what we're looking at collectively.
No, and I ask that only because I know you're the subject matter experts when it comes to audits, and I only said that for the board's edification of if you hire an internal individual or one person, obviously, they're not going to do the work of seven. And I think very similar to our school board attorney position, there aren't, everyone's not experienced in K through 12 education, either performing attorney services or audit functions. So I think that's something to consider if you are going to hire a individual, how easy is it going to be to identify that person in the state of Florida? And then second, you know, again, as discussed earlier, the, there are CPA firms that perform this function, so they have people that have the K through 12 experience. So I think those are just a couple of factors, as well as the number of auditors that would be necessary to service the district, at least with respect to a risk assessment, so.
Can I, for sake of time, then, and correct me if I'm wrong, that we have on the table, the option of using the clerk's office, some of the factors would be they would have to hire someone specifically that has the education background as well, and initially, initially do the, the risk assessment, then hire the additional people, and go through that, that whole process. Plan A, Plan B, that we look at a firm that is already doing education audits and is familiar with that, and they provide us with, you know, an individual that we would work with. So, and the, and the factor being as well, time as well as cost.
Can I just add to that second one? Perhaps, I'm assuming staff is going to bring this information to us. So Dr. Atkins, if you could have staff contact school districts, like Gibson, I know, does the internal audit function. We could hire them to, to be our internal auditor. And I'm using Gibson as an example, I know that, it's just the only one I know. So can we contact school districts that have hired Gibson to find out what the add-ons have been?
Sharon Berger.
You already did it.
We use them, yes.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay. And you were saying to.
What are the add-ons? Because with, with a private company, you guys are going to come to us with a full plan, and there's, you're not going to try to sell us consulting services to implement any changes that you recommend, whereas a private company will try to sell us consulting services, and what's, what does that look like for a district? Because that has to be taken into consideration when we make a cost analysis.
Well, and I think when we're looking at the cost analysis, what does that include in comparing apples to apples?
I know, but I think we need to specifically ask that question, because that.
Right.
They're not going to do the add-ons, whereas a private company will push for the add-ons. I think.
Yeah, but we don't have to take them.
Conclusions are made, and they would seek to have their external third party versus internal management.
Right, it's like the air conditioning.
Correct.
Correct.
This job is the answer.
Well, and then, though, if we do the follow-up, like you saying have staff do it, we would actually have between that and the districts that are already doing, it's some knowledge of you don't really need this and you don't really need that.
Well, I guess my question is, what was the estimate versus the actual cost?
Right.
Because a private company will come to you and say, "This is the estimate," and then you sign the contract, and then they come back to you with additional costs, and it ends up costing more in the end. That's, that's what I'm looking for. What's?
But we have the comparison with the other districts that are using some of these companies.
Okay.
I mean, I'm just saying.
Okay.
Okay, so are we at the point, we do need to move to the other one? Are we at the point that?
I think the third question though is.
We've got a third one?
Is Giovinelli's, which is the cost of an internal audit department. What would it cost for us to hire and build an internal audit department? And I think we have to include the factors that were stated here by the clerk of court's office, which is, you know, the cost of materials and expertise and the period of time associated with doing that.
Bring in a team of seven, nine, 10 people, who, you know, would be wanting to take on that next task. Now, it's going to end at one year. That's a whole nother.
And then, and I think the time factor comes over us, that we have to get it done.
And I, yeah, and I also spoke with Mr. Foster, who is the internal auditor at FGCU, because he happens to also be the president of the Southwest Florida Auditor Association. And he, and I talked to him just in general about the process and really was calling to say, "If we interview, would you help?" And he said, "Absolutely," but went on to explain how he felt it would be extremely challenging for his board to be able to find someone, given the conditions of the statute and what all is involved, to us to be able to find a qualified applicant that could handle that role. He felt, you know, he said, "I'll be happy to assist, but I, I just want to caution you that I think you would really struggle to be able to find somebody that could fill that role," so.
Can we?
Yeah. Who's credible? That's right, I'm sorry, who's credible?
We do need to move on.
Well, this, I think segues into, so this makes sense that one person, it's going to be, as you said, a colossal failure, but. Did you say that? Oh, well, that's what I heard.
Yeah.
A failure, something like that. All right, anyway, you know what I mean. A tremendous undertaking, colossal failure. All right, so what I'm thinking is, is it possible that we do a five-year plan with, because I really do like the idea of having an internal department, but you've convinced me that one person, it's not going to, it's, it's not going to happen well with, with one person, that we kind of move in, into, and, you know, maybe some of the people that you have hired, we can.
She's poaching.
Them and, and, and that sort of thing, because we really do need this, and we needed it like yesterday, an auditing team that really takes care of these things. But there's still, to me, a value in having your own employee, because when you have your own employee, that person will have a buy-in to the reputation. That person is actually a member of this organization, not just somebody who is, you know, contracted. And it's part of, that person is part of the team, and I think that's really important, to have someone that buys into the reputation and is an actual member of the organization. And if we can't do it now, that I think that would be an important goal.
Well, and, and we did discuss.
May I come in?
Oh, yes, please.
I absolutely agree with Betsy, but we don't have time to do it now, as she said. I think we're at the point where we have to put out an RFQ, and we see what people bring us. We have to have something in place by July 1st, which means we have, well, staff can tell me what kind of timeline we would need to do that, but even a one-year contract would give us the time and experience to have a real conversation about, about this a year from now.
Okay, so if we, if we look at the fact that if we put out the hue and cry in this economy, that's going to be hard to get someone right away that's going to fit all of that. So we're looking at an individual that can get us started, that can subcontract out the other needs that we have. Or we're looking at an organization that can provide all of that. We would still have the one person reporting to us, and they would have the, the access to all the subcontracted things that they. the, the access to all the subcontracted things that they don't know within their firm, so for sake of time, do we, how, I'm not sure what to say, that we look into, like you were asking, Dr. Atkins, look into one of those two options, and it seems as though it's going to be quicker time-wise to get-
I just, based on what I've heard, trying to, again, so we, let's say we start the process of trying to find someone, and we don't get a good candidate, then, by then hour, at the end of April, early May.
Just, I was looking at the list that you sent that had come from Hillsborough County, and it's just interesting that on that list are actual firms that we have used in the off-years, you know, as you know, the state audits us every three years, but every off-year, we have to utilize an external firm, the first name on the list, Cherry and Barker, is one I know that we have used, so there's other things that we can do as well, maybe to get an opinion, and we can certainly do that research and bring that back in a relatively timely fashion, because we do have experience there, they have experience auditing this school district in the functions that are applicable in the statute.
Okay.
It's just one.
So, can we, give us a timeframe that we need to get back to, like, yesterday? How long would it take for you to maybe check out some of them, or get some answers back for us?
Well, given that this is a priority, I think we could, we could certainly get back with, I, next time you and I meet, I'll, which is Monday, yeah.
Maybe Susan can help me, because I-
Yes, Susan will.
This should be a new territory for me.
Certainly, certainly can help.
And, and I'm just saying, folks, that in the economy, everybody is saying, like the gentleman at FGCU, it's very difficult to find qualified people, because they can pick, choose, and refuse right now where they want to.
Are you interested in them, in, in the clerk of courts, preparing something that would give a cost, and all of that?
And a cost analysis, and then we get one from you, and we've got some, something to compare. Thank you so very much.
I definitely would love to hear what you have to, to say, and, you know, come back to us, and one thing is, they're local.
Right.
These other people, they have to come from Hillsborough or wherever, and what does that, you know, what does that look like? So, yes, please, that's my opinion.
And I definitely, in making my lit, my own list of pluses and deltas, I mean, they're already in existence, they have the equipment, the materials, they're known locally, they've done their research, and they have credibility in this area, so I definitely do not want to discount the clerk of courts at this point. And Dr. Pruitt's research, I mean, she's obviously done some more research before presenting this idea to us.
And this is actually for them, so, you, in, in your training, you would go and get school, you would go and get, learn the best practices, practices and so forth, and you would get your training for that, to be able to, to audit school districts, so I would think you would have the, yeah, and, and hire the, the people that would, that have maybe that experience, but obviously, so that, I mean, your expertise would definitely, like, right, I mean, you're not going to just do it the way you-
The audit community is, is a sharing community, so we would go out to people who have done this and ask for their programs, and they would provide that, so, we're a quick learn, if, if you were to hire an external firm, like a CPA firm, to do auditing, what they typically do is they, they bring in somebody at the top who is fairly well experienced, but then they bring in their trainees, you know, the, the staff, and, and this is their training ground to do the next big school district that they can find.
And I will say, I didn't know this, that Tammy was coming, but she was on the school board when I was the superintendent of the city of, she was one of my school board members, so she has a little bit of knowledge.
So, do you want to switch over from what you're doing to be our person? Hey, we have ways, right? Thank you so much, you guys, we really appreciate your time and all of your expertise, and we will get back to you. Ladies and gentlemen, it is 4:45, we need to move on expeditiously to, which is going to bring up another thing I'll, I'll bring up later on about workshops, but anyway, you ready to go ahead then with the other part?
Just turn it right back to Dr. Pruitt to speak about our board position.
So, I think next conversation is around the school board attorney position, and one of the tasks was for you guys to review the job description, and see if, based on the potential for, you know, possible change in structure, or how you wanted to move forward with that position, so I'll just kind of open it up for discussion.
My first question is, you know, there's been discussion about a team and a need for additional help, and with all the things that we do, what, what are we looking at as far as what's budgeted for us to make any changes, or do we have to just fill that slot as it is? Is this an opportunity to get creative, or?
Mr. Chan, just a second.
Well, through the chair, I think you've got several issues you have to address, obviously, Mr. Dodik is going to be leaving in May, so timing is essentially essential, just like the internal auditor position here, therefore, there may be a need to get an immediate solution as opposed to just a simple, a long-term solution, and kind of have that in, in the back of your mind as you restructure. Obviously, the restructuring, as was previously proposed by Dr. Pruitt, allows the district to have additional resources in its legal department to supplement other parts of the district. At this time, I currently serve all of the different departments, and obviously, having lawyers that could specialize in very specific areas such as ESC, which has its own, construction, again, another area, given the half-cent sales tax and the sheer volume of construction we'll be doing over the next several years, that kind of support, in addition to what we're already doing, would, is, is needed, you know, and I think Mr. Dodik emphasized that as well, while I'm able to handle a lot, you know, again, it stretches the district thin, for example, I'm covering Mr. Dodik's position today, but no one's covering mine, so, while I'm here, so, you know, again, it allows for internal, you know, creating internal experts that are going to be with the district for a long time, so.
So, can we, can we share, I mean, I know we're, you know, we're needy with seven women needing an attorney, but I'm just asking, is it something that we can share, for example, you said ESC, so if we were to hire someone that has, you know, the ability to, to have the board function and to help you with ESC, I mean, is that something you might look at?
Again, there are possibilities there, there, there conflicts arise if issues are presented in front of the board, and you have an attorney that may take a position on it, so it, it, you know, and again, I think that was something that was originally discussed in terms of where there may be a potential conflict with a attorney representing the district on an issue that comes in front of the board, and then also serving as a legal advisor to the board, so in those instances, yeah, there will be potential internal conflicts, which is why I think the model of having someone there, and then someone, and then the tree down the line, whereas that individual serves as the advisor to the board, these individuals can actually litigate the issues or present the issues before the board.
Ms. Morgan, I heard you.
No.
Oh, okay, you were just shifting, other comments?
I'm not clear on cost here, so I see outside services, the second tab in the backup materials for today, I see outside services, it looks like workers' comp, comp cases might be the only area where it makes sense, with that and COPS, loan financing, energy management, we might be able to find somebody a little bit cheaper than that, but not a lot. I understand that we have a huge volume of construction work coming into us, I don't see an estimate of what that's going to cost, and also, I know that I've, and I know I asked the question too late to have the information in front of us today, but does the referendum permit us to use referendum money to pay for a contracted attorney to review those contracts, is that the, is that the equivalent of paying an architect and a general contractor, or, and/or does it allow us to pay the salary and benefits of an internal attorney that performs any referendum legal work? Am I making sense in my question?
No, you are, and, you know, obviously, we'd have to look at the, the, the language of the, the referendum that passed, and again, without having that in front of me, I unfortunately can't answer that question.
I understand, I understand.
So.
And then the, the other thing that I have, the other question and huge concern I have is, there will be times when there is, where the board's interests need to be represented, represented in opposition to the superintendent's interests, there, there are times that that will arise, and my concern in hiring a chief counsel and then having a legal department under the chief counsel is the objectivity and the ability of that chief counsel to serve the board when he or she is also working for the superintendent, can you, can you address that in terms of your experience in Broward, and your experience with other attorneys across the state, please?
Yeah, I mean, with, and, sorry, I came from Dade, but with respect to-
My bad, I knew you came from Miami, I'm sorry.
With respect to Miami-Dade, again, their model, they have 16 attorneys that report to the general counsel, the general counsel reports directly to the board, and the attorneys, however, report to that general counsel, although they work for the district and the superintendent, so you still have a model that works, I posed that exact question to him, how do you handle the conflicts? Now, they haven't had that many as of recent, he did express that in his role, he represents the board, but he also represents the district, so it's not an individual board member per se that may have a disagreement with the superintendent, it, it would be the collective board, and usually, most of the time, the board and the superintendent are in line, so, however, in that case, he did discuss the options of having, in those instances where conflict does arise, bringing in a outside firm to serve on that specific role, and that happens all the time with respect to legal departments for public agencies, there are issues that just need to be referred out because of the nature of the conflict, it provides a little more level of objectivity, because, again, you have that general counsel that's internal here, and has to be here despite whatever, you know, decision is made, so I think in that instance, as long as you have someone that can recognize the conflict and make the appropriate recommendation at that time, I think, I think the district will be served, and in addition, I think the goal here is to identify the roles of the two departments, and, and really provide the resources that'll best serve the district as a whole moving forward, because right now, it's just a little bit inequitable in terms of the amount of work that one side of the house is having versus the other, and I think we, you know, I know Mr. Dodik and I've worked, worked together, but I think we, in a different model, we may have worked more together than we currently do, because, again, of the functions, and, you know, I try not to put him in a position where I'm discussing anything that may put a, present, present a conflict for him, but again, that's our role as attorneys, to identify when those conflicts are established, and then draw the lines when necessary.
And, and just one last thing before you go, is we need, I think we need to hire, hire employee, an outside firm until we hire somebody, because we're talking about a, a gap.
Well, the timeframe, I think we're too, exactly, we're looking at our urgent need, which is to have an attorney for the board, and the big picture of how do we structure all that, all attorneys working for the district.
The key there for me is going to be hiring somebody who I can pick up the phone and call and not be charged for every 15 minutes that I call, so it would have to be-
What attorney does that?
What, what kind of a contract is that?
You can, you can have a lump-sum contract.
That's it, lump-sum contract.
So you can ident, you know, a lot of, there are a lot of government law firms that provide these sort of resources, I believe Sanibel has a city attorney that's a private law firm, or a private attorney, so you, what you would do is essentially reach out to them and determine what they believe they could provide the services for based on the job description, the volume of work, and then it would be a lump-sum fee that, a known fixed cost for the year, which allows you to email them as much as you want, essentially, or call them, obviously, they may restructure that after the first year, but nevertheless, it, it gets you, it gives you an opportunity to have a fixed cost, but also be provided with the services necessary to serve in the capacity at board meetings, and address legal issues as they become available.
And I'm sorry, Dr. Atkins, I have to leave, and I had to make sure that I got that out there before I left.
Go ahead.
Sorry.
Well, and, and we have to also deal with the fact that we've had this as a part of our culture for a long period of time, in terms of a, a board attorney dedicated for the board, and a staff attorney dedicated to the staff, and I think in, in talking to Mr. Dodik, you know, he has definitely seen a difference in, in the role, and in terms of what he provides in legal services versus what he provides as an advisory to board, the vast majority of the time, I mean, his, the figure he used for me was like 80% of advisory to the board, 20% legal services, that is not what you're going to see in the model that we're talking about here, I've seen a difference in the way Mr. Williams approaches his work with the district as it relates to, you know, he, he is protecting the interests of the school district of Lee County, and, you know, whereas often, Mr. Dodik's role is working with board members on their, on their items, so that is, that is a, that is a culture that had been cultivated by, you know, our prior board attorney, he brought that, that from Pinellas, I believe, and that's the way they operate there, so if you were to think about moving in that other direction, which I think long-term is your, is your best, you have to, you would have to give a lot of thought to how that would be structured and how it would work, you, you couldn't jump right into it, I don't believe, the work that he does right now, I mean, is, is very extensive, it requires him to, to wear many, many hats, and so then if you go throwing in, well, now we're going to serve the board, and, and the requirements of the board, without really delineating what that entails, I think that would quickly become overwhelming, so all of that, I think, should just be a part of, for, part of the discussion, I see this, if you're wanting to move in this direction, it would be more of an evolutionary step rather than something that you just jump right to.
And you hit the nail on the head with my concern, Attorney Williams protects the interests of the district, who will protect the interests of the school board? That's my concern in changing the structure of what we have right now, and, and you're, you're telling me that this structure will allow for protection of the school board going forward, is, is that what I'm hearing you say?
Yes, and, and just so you understand, I also protect the interests of the school board, too, so I mean, it, it-
Well, I mean, typically, they're aligned, but in the event, in the event they're not, that's, that's my concern.
I think in the, again, in the event they're not, I think, the goal is, again, to create a model that allows for collaboration, allows for effective use of resources, and provides everyone with the legal services that they need, I, I think, and I think the model we have right now doesn't necessarily do that.
Exactly, and I, I kind of tend to agree with you, and then also, having just come on the board a few months ago, to speaking to your comment about how, you know, the percentage of time with advisory and with legal, I don't know how clearly a, a new person coming on the board understands that, how clearly it is, the expectations of what the board attorney, because honestly, you come on, it's like, okay, he's ours, you know, whenever we need him, whatever we need, he's ours, should there be some delineation of, to this point, or to this point, and not just, you know, 24/7, we own you? So, and, and seriously, some people, when they say, this is the board attorney, and if you're on the outside looking in, and you see, you know, Rob or whoever sitting up there all the time, it's like, wow, he's there at your beck and call all the time, do we need to refine that definition to say, this is what his role is, this is when you use him, and maybe that would help the whole situation, but right now, time-wise as well, any other comments, because I think our urgency is, Rob's leaving, and we need an attorney, so we need to decide how we're going to fulfill that right-now situation.
So, if you look at the job description for the board attorney, I think it, it does delineate what, what his or her responsibilities might be, and I think for acquiring knowledge, you know, as a new board member, or as a recently elected board member, it does take time, I think we've talked about this, things are changing constantly, so it's always a work in progress, but Florida School Boards Association, in my opinion, my personal opinion, has really provided a lot of direction and guidelines, and, and have services and, and advice available in many situations, so I think that if we look at this and focus in on that, we'll be in a better position, but I really like what you- But I really like what you suggested, because in the event that there is a disagreement, we can hire someone else to represent the interest of the board temporarily, just for that one specific situation. So, you know, I think we have to be diligent in, in what we decide to do.
Okay. Can we come to, please?
Oh, I was going to say, so I, I think, based on what I'm hearing, you know, the job description is something that we can always revisit. So if, I mean, if we're going to, as Dr. Atkins says, you know, kind of work our way into changing the structure, we could always redo the job description to meet the changing structure of the board. Again, due to, Mr. Dotick had indicated to me that he'd sort of put out the word that we were going to be looking for a school board attorney across the state and has not received one inquiry. There, I have a, I, there's a little, that little knot in my stomach about, maybe we should at least get the process started and allow me to at least get the ads running, get the ad out there, so we can at least see if we are going to get some viable candidates. And then in the meantime, you can, you know, Dr. Atkins and Mr. Williams can, or Mr. Dotick, what are you going to do in the interim? You know, what is that firm that's going to? Because what if we don't, like, we don't find good candidates? And I'm, I'm sure you don't want to settle, so.
And the, and the workload right now, I think we'd, you couldn't just have him step in.
Right. No.
In the interim.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
So how do you hire somebody for one job description and then they arrive here in the middle of changing that role and that function? Shouldn't we be deciding what we want to hire first and then hiring?
Normally, yes. But as jobs change, like when we do job studies and we realize, okay, we, we still need that person, but what we need them to do is changing, but it's in that same realm, you, then you change the job description to, here's what we need now, and you can do that with somebody that's in the position.
Because to me, a big part of chief counsel will be management skills. And I'm not necessarily looking for somebody with management skills who does Attorney Dotick's job, but a chief counselor, I would be looking for management skills. So how do I know if I'm going to hire that person and we're going to change to a legal department? It just, it doesn't make sense to me. To me, to me, to take the pressure off and to do this right, we hire a, tell me the name of the agreement again, a lump sum attorney.
Sure.
Serves in this role while we figure out exactly how this department is going to be structured, what period of time it's going to take for us to staff up in there, and then move forward. I, I don't think, I don't think we as a board lose anything.
Okay.
That's just my suggestion.
But in the meantime, while we're doing that, you still could have the, the human cry out.
Well, I could, but I think what she's saying is, but then I'm doing that based on a job description that you may not.
Yeah, what are, what are we looking for? Are we looking for the, the Lee County traditional board attorney or are we looking for chief counsel? Because that's going to bring in different applicants as well. Somebody who's going to run a legal department is going to come with a different skillset and is going to apply for the job that a board attorney, am I crazy?
I think.
You can't answer that question.
Morgan, we've, I'm sorry. You have to say hey every now and then. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted, I just wanted to say, I'm in with Mrs. Patrica. We've got to hire somebody, and it's going to be a firm that's short term, and then we're going to have to long term figure out what we want to do, and then hire, define and hire then.
So are we looking at, can we come to consensus on hiring that firm temporarily? And then we need to decide how long that temporary is? Is six months of temporary enough for you to?
I think it's more on how long it takes to come up with a decision about what the structure is. From that point forward, I'm saying I probably need three months. So, in other words, if we can figure out that structure in three months, then I think six months is, is a.
So three months to kind of, you know, get it all together, three months to, to look to hire. So we're looking at a six-month lump sum contract?
Possibility.
Did I say it right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Um, I can, I mean, I'm not sure if there's any other discussion on that. Dr. Atkins, anything else? Does that sound feasible?
Just sort of a timeline on what our next steps are as a board in order to figure out.
Is, is to look, once we come to consensus on the fact of looking for that six-month contract.
I could resend out to you that, the original proposal and let you all review that, and then maybe we could then schedule another workshop to maybe, and then I could maybe work with Brian about the contracted services and kind of see where we are for this year to see if those expenses are in line. Because I don't, there isn't, I mean, you asked the question, but there isn't anything additional budgeted, so it would be a matter of replace, using funds we use for outside attorneys to cover the expense if we were going to hire. And then that would give him time to say, could we hire an attorney with, if they were doing specific work for capital, right? Wasn't that a question from earlier? Then we can get that answer as well, and that might help us, too.
I thought that both, and as well as Mr. Dotick had made mention to us several times, the need of that one extra person regardless of what we do. So in looking at everything, we definitely need, need to look at that as well. The person that can take some of both of, and run with it.
But would that be a part of, if you do have the, the contract with a firm for a short term, would that be something specific? They would just do this one thing or?
Well, they would serve in the role and the capacity, they would fill that job description of the school board attorney. So whatever Rob did, that's what they would.
That's exactly.
Money would be used to cover that. Yeah.
And we have monies to cover that.
We're not going to be paying Rob, so.
Correct.
Oh, right. And, and does he ever subcontract out? Do you guys subcontract out?
Occasionally, we look to do that. It doesn't, it happens very infrequently, though, so I will, I won't say that it's, it's a common thing. But I think even now, sort of given the workload, we've been looking at the options of trying to identify where we can do that to help.
And so maybe while you're waiting for us to do everything we need to do, that might be something you need to look at.
Correct. And I think we, and we are looking at that for that matter, so.
Okay. So our, our decision is, first off, are we in agreement that we will look for a firm, am I right, that would do a six-month lump sum contract to fill the, to fill out the board attorney's position? Is that, that's on the table? Can I see a consensus on that? Okay. Ms. Morgan, how are you voting?
Yeah.
Okay.
And maybe Mr. Williams and I can actually, and Dr. Atkins can review before I resend it out. Let's look at it one more time and see, because we haven't heard his perspective on it. And we'll, then we'll, so I'll get that out to you within the week. Would that be okay?
Yeah, that's fine. And then is it too much to ask then to say if you would have maybe a short list of some possible firms that we could use?
I think I would defer to Rob and Brian on that.
Yeah, I think Mr. Dotick's actually looked at that.
Right.
We've had brief discussion on that, but I believe he, I mean, it's, the universe of school board attorneys is small, so whether it's law firms or lawyers specifically. So I think he's already identified some that are the closest to our district.
So if you do have that when you bring the other piece back, and, and I would be, Ms. Vaughn, can you tell us your concerns?
Oh, why, yes. Why vote it that way? I was just thinking, from the point of view of budget, because we've budgeted through the end of this fiscal year for Rob, right? But if we go six months, wouldn't that put us into the next?
But we would have already budgeted for him into the next year. We didn't assume that we weren't going to have him. Am I right?
Yeah, we would use the, we would use the, so we wouldn't hire a new one until the contract time was up. So we wouldn't expend any additional funds. We would just start from the point that the person would be hired. And if we were going to hire an additional attorney, the money would be used. We wouldn't contract out. We would pay the salary instead.
And to address your concerns about the, the fee, so, you know, you can do, you can structure contracts with law firms however you want, however they choose to agree to. And one of the ways you can do it is you can phase it out. I wouldn't, I'm not anticipating that you'd get a lump sum and then pay that all at once. It would be paid over a period of time, which if you take into account Mr. Dotick's salary and benefits, would actually possibly save the district money in, in that short period of time, so.
But what if we, by a miracle, have somebody who actually fills the bill earlier than the six months?
Well, I think, again, you look at termination provisions. They're a law firm. They're used to working.
Those were my concerns, because I didn't know the answer to those questions.
Making sure we could get out of it.
Making sure we could get out of it and, and we wouldn't lose somebody because we were.
We weren't ready.
Already hooked into.
Okay. Can we look at, and Susan, maybe you can help with this, the ninth is our next meeting. Do we want to do this in the briefing meeting at, on the ninth, or do we want? I want to give you guys time. You said within a week, right? Dr. Paul, how long before you guys can get back to us?
On the, the structure and the information, yeah, we can get, so.
Do you need that long of time, or is there something you can do the end of next?
Well, we'll get, I think we can get something out to you by the end of next week. Don't, I mean, I'm looking at Brian and Dr. Atkins.
Okay, and you know what? We'll be out of town most of next week, after Monday, at least, most of us will be out of town. So if you get it to us, that's fine. That leaves us at the ninth to discuss it in that briefing slash workshop. Do, how, do we want to change it to a workshop again?
I think that depends on what the superintendent has planned for.
Yeah, what's on, I don't know what's on there. Okay. And we can make that determination, but if we softball.
And I think we have a little bit of time for the structure. I think your more pressing is getting a firm and getting, and I think he can get that to you, he and Rob, probably pretty quickly. So even if we went to the next one in April, I don't think that's going to affect.
Okay. And Rob's last day is?
May 3rd, I believe.
Okay. So if we look at the ninth for our next reconvening about this and we'll decide whether it's going to be a workshop or a briefing, everyone agreed? Okay. This was painless. All right. Anything else? Then do we?
Good of the order?
Good of the order items? Got anything?
I did. Ms. Givinelli had expressed some concerns with the Newport Board, and I had Mr. Davis send the board some information relative to that contract that I'll be bringing to the board this evening. Mr. Davis is also available for questions. I think that answers probably the majority of your questions. Just to give the board a little bit of the context here, this, this is a, this is a group that we would like to bring in to provide advice and help us with the transition. You know, the intention is still to hire a chief operations officer. Hopefully, in the short term, the reason I, I went ahead and brought this to the board is I didn't, we weren't sure how long the contract was going to go for in terms of a duration. We anticipate it will be less than six months. It could even be less than that. But the nature of the contract would, if it went over four months, then that would go over that 50,000 threshold for the board. So I thought it would just be prudent to bring it before the board and also, in an effort to be transparency, you know, transparent, it would also open that up to the public, so it wouldn't be me just executing a considerable contract. So that's the purpose. We do believe that Newport Board could actually help facilitate the search process. They have got their own connections in the industry, but also, you know, I've also asked Dr. Pruitt to, she's got, I think, three.
Viable.
Viable search firms that we could also employ.
They've given proposals.
Yeah.
Other than, other than Newport, you're saying, or no?
Well, I'm excited because I think the, the gentleman that's coming and just the firm in general can assist us in helping with maybe targeting that search a little better, knowing where these experts are out there and to be able to, whether we utilize them as the quote unquote search firm or whether we hire out and tell very specifically to one of the firms what we're, you know, how to go about it. Just, you know, we, we haven't had much success in that role of chief operating officer and being able to do that on our own. So I'm, I'm, I feel very good about having that resource available to us.
I have that as a pull as well. And I think it behooves us to table this discussion until we vote on the consent item, because I have some things, you know, tick, tick tock for this meeting, but I have some concerns. I didn't express specific questions, but I do have specific questions that I want to hear from everybody.
Okay.
All right. And that's, and we can certainly do that.
Try to find the time to look at what was just sent to us.
Okay. It's 5:16, guys, can we make it really quick?
Yes, I'll make it really quick. I would just appreciate it. In our protocol manual, it does state that we should be given 24 hours notice for anything that's going to be pulled and the reason why. Because I know when we go back and do research and then it's pulled, now we're waiting for things to happen. So I just would appreciate that. And my second?
Mine was pulled in plenty of time, by the way.
Oh, I just seen the one that was at 10 something.
Did I get any mail about that?
I just got it at 10 o'clock this morning. And then the other one is, I sent in for Kathleen, Ms. Morgan, at the CSI meeting, and they, a lot of the, the people sitting in that room had shared an issue with taping. So they asked me to please bring it to everyone, so I am letting you know that they've spoke to different advisory committees and they are feeling uncomfortable with that fact, so I'm just sharing that information. That's all I have to say.
You mean with being videotaped?
Correct. Bring it.
Anything else? Then we are adjourned until 5:45. We have, oh, Ms. Morgan, any other?